Roll please.
Okay. Dr. Chow Shoemaker.
Here.
Joey Eva Gaines.
Present.
Rebecca Boland.
Here.
Sandra Flowers.
Present.
Robert Larry.
Yeah.
Thomas Phelan.
Yeah.
Dr. Robert Power.
There.
All present.
Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
I'm going to ask for a motion to change the agenda.
So move.
Second.
Discussion. We just have some, I guess the discussion mounts to the fact we have some guests and we'd like to move you up some all.
Do you want to do it after 4.1?
After our student.
Yeah, do it after 4.1.
After, oh, I'm running me.
Yep.
We're going to, we've had a motion on the floor to change the agenda because we have some visitors.
Yes, thank you.
We're going to ask, all in favor to change?
Aye.
Aye.
Change the motion.
Do we have a discussion first?
Yeah, go ahead.
I just was going to let our, she has homework tonight.
She has the 4.1.
And so, and she has, so I was going to, could we just have our, our high school students speak and then do 4, and then go right to it?
Go to the guest.
Right.
All right, I accept that amendment, all in favor.
Aye.
Opposed?
Can I say that?
We have one other item on, under one, which is a moment of silence, Mrs. Gaines is going to take care of that.
James Malikas of Middletown passed away on Friday, October 3rd, 2014. He is survived by his daughter Zenovia Canali, Rogers High School English Department Head, and his daughter-in-law Mercedes Malikas, Pell Elementary School Grade One Teacher. Thank you.
Now we'll go on to the student, uh, Student Council update. We have a new senior here, Hannah Davis. Welcome.
Thank you. Last, Rogers High School had Spirit Week two weeks ago and celebrated homecoming with a shutout victory over Middletown High School. Sports are in full spring, so come out and support your soccer, volleyball, tennis, and football teams. SATs were held last Saturday at Rogers, and all sophomores and juniors will take the PSATs tomorrow during school. Many seniors have started work on senior projects and applications to college, and last but certainly not least, the Rogers Theater Company is happy to have Mr. Khor back in the building and will be putting on a Halloween show this month. Thank you.
Any questions? Thank you.
Thank you, Hannah.
Go home and study.
Thanks, Hannah.
Okay, I'm going to ask the superintendent to introduce our guests.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Shoemaker. Am I on? Okay. I'd like to welcome the Northeast Collaborative Architects, and I'd like to welcome tonight Dan Kozniewski, Glenn Gardner, and Daniel Weston. Nate Garden is also a person that works with the team as well, and he is not here this evening. I want to especially thank them for working with us on this feasibility study for Triplet Preschool. Just to remind the committee, last spring, Amy Donnelly Roach and others, along with Linda Liberty and Mike Carbone from Head Start, got together and we applied for a feasibility grant to take a look at the possibilities of using the triplet school going forward as a preschool. Amy Donnelly Roach, just for the public, was and was willing to be here this evening, but she's on to a new chapter in her life. She's officially started with the Tiverton School Department, so we wish her well, Amy well, and she's always available to come back and work collaboratively with us going forward in the future. So we want to thank Amy for all her efforts in this. So I'm going to hand over the microphone now to Northeast Collaborative Architects. Thank you very much for being here. Okay, we're going to need someone at the microphone.
Could you introduce yourselves as you get? Yes, I will. I'm just trying to, we'll need someone to man the, uh, the slides.
Can, is this on? It is? Okay. My name is Glenn Gardner. I'm a principal or partner with Northeast Collaborative Architects, and I'm here this evening with my partner Dan Weston and my associate, project architect Dan, Daniel Kozniewski. And we're here this evening, and first of all, I want to thank you for allowing us to present this evening to the school committee and superintendent, and we also want to thank you for involving us in this exciting project. We were hired in early July to work with the team that superintendent just spoke about, and we spent the first month gathering information and then following two months putting that information together and having meetings to discuss opportunities with the triplet school as a preschool. We were doing, we were hired to do a analysis of the school as a potential repurposing of a three and four-year-old preschool facility. I'm going to speak a bit about the history and the existing buildings. Dan Kozniewski's going to follow up, talking about the proposed repurposing of the building, and Dan Weston will speak about the cost and the construction of, of the new facility. So, all right, no, this is good. Triplet preschool, it's a little bit dark, but that's a view of the, the school, the Catholic school that was built in 1960 on the left side, and then off to the far right. We're looking south, and that's a picture of pretty much the entire site, and as you can see, the site is almost completely asphalt. The building to the far right, it's a little bit distorted, is the residential building that was built in the 1880s that fronts Broadway. Originally, the built, was, the building was built in 1960 as an element, Catholic elementary school, and then somewhere in the late 80s, Newport Schools leased it for school, school classrooms, and that lasted about 10 years. And I believe my daughter was in eighth grade, I think she was there in 2001, if I'm not mistaken, at triplet school, and, and then after that, it was used for Adult Education Center, and now it's presently vacant. The, the school has varying qualities, and you can see the concrete is falling in certain locations. The building, the picture to the upper right, you see the blonde brick and the, the glass is a single pane glass, and what, what we've discovered is that the building itself is rather structurally sound. The, there is a built-up tarn gravel roof that has to be removed, and I think Ed Collins has a report on that that we used in our study. The lower right-hand corner, you see the end, main entrance to the existing school building, again, mostly asphalt covers the entire site. Our goal, or our, you'll see in our design, will be pretty much using that same main entrance to the building. If you want, next slide. On the interior, we see a typical classroom, and this floor is asphalt, I mean, is asbestos tile, which will have to be removed. Pretty much all the finishes you see in this picture will be gone. You can see the damage from the, the leaking roof above and the custical ceiling. The, the glass, again, as I was saying, is a single-layered glass, so that would all have to be updated. We have this casework and, and lighting. Everything would have to be brought up to code and, and new standards. To the right, we have a stair. We would repurpose the stair. We would be putting in new railings. That's a terrazzo, terrazzo floor, and it's actually in fairly good shape. We also do have some fire suppression system in the building presently, but that would also have to be updated. This is a site view of what exists there now from satellite, and the site is approximately 1.55 acres. This is Broadway. This is Ledyard Street. That's one way in this direction. This is Princeton Street. That's a two-way street. This is Union here, I believe, and, and this is a playground area, or it's being used. It has a gate, I believe, at the moment, and then this, and Union State, Street actually takes this form and is a one-way out in this direction. Again, the existing residential building up at the very front faces Broadway. In our study, we don't see the, that building as really playing a major role into the success of this project, so that building may remain. It may, we may move it forward closer to the street, or we may raise the building and, and use it for parking or landscape. Again, this is the main building that's about 13,000 square feet. That's, that shows it as a, it's a, you know, a flat roof, and it's, that's the roof we're in process of trying to replace. The building itself is a classic double-loaded corridor. Each classroom is just a little under 1,000 square feet. This is the main level, grade level. There's two levels. The second level is partially below grade, but both levels do meet grade, and, and in this case, we have stair, stair tower, stairs and, at either end of the classrooms that will remain in place. So what's, what's fascinating about this plan and what, besides the fact that the structure itself is fairly, is fairly sound, we also have a, a built, a design that's a classroom building, so it lends itself to this use. And so these rooms that you see as classrooms would remain as classrooms, they'll be modified. The bathrooms would also be modified but remain as bathrooms, and then offices and lounge would remain in place. The one major difference is we're, we're looking at a ramp to bring in accessibility at that level, so we can get access, handicap access to this main level. Next slide. The lower level also comes out at grade. We have two classrooms up front and cafeteria space, a kitchen, storage, flexible space here, and a large mechanical space, which is actually a few steps below this level. This is about 12,000 square feet of space, and Dan will be talking to, to us about how we're going to repurpose this space. The elevations, again, you see it's, it's masonry. On the, on the good side, we, the masonry is in fairly good shape, it would need to be repointed. All the window openings can be reused, but will be re-glazed with a energy-efficient glazing system. Will have a new roof, and pretty much the structure you see here would remain. There's a section through the, the building. Again, it's a, it's a steel frame structure, open web steel joists, concrete deck and steel decking. Again, it's in sound condition. We believe the found, we don't, when we took our structural engineer through, he didn't, he didn't observe any major cracking or settlement issues, so we probably will find some, somewhere, but to the extent in his, from his viewing or observations, he felt that the building itself was redeemable.
Glenn, excuse me, once we've got that slide up.
Yeah.
The bar would show different elevations.
Right. So I'm glad you brought that up, and Dan's going to get into this in a little bit more detail, but we have grade entry to classrooms on the east side, so this, this section, these are longitudinal sections. This one's going from east to west, so this is the main entrance up above where we were looking at that one photograph. This is a lower-level entrance, so we do come in at grade here. Our, our goal would be to carry that level straight across and create a, a single level, so we wouldn't have any changes in elevation there, so it would be totally accessible. And also, we would use that space for, we could use that space now for mechanical systems and run, running ductwork. So it actually turns into a, it turns from a deficit into a, an asset for us.
Glenn, is that the side entrance more or less?
This is the side entrance. This would be the head start. I don't want to jump ahead, but this is probably going to be the head start. I don't want to steal your thunder, Dan. This is going to be the head start, and then this would be the Newport Schools.
Okay.
Upper level.
Okay.
So we'll get into a little bit more detail on that.
Which end is the, is the ramp on now, coming off the parking lot?
The ramp, yeah, this would be, the ramp would be over in this section.
Okay.
So it, I think we have about.
East to west kind of throws me.
Yeah, it is. It's hard, it's, sections are a little difficult. Technical drawings sometimes are difficult to understand, but that would be also this, this would be the ramp area that we're talking about, and I think it's a two-to-three-foot difference, Dan, do you recall?
Three foot six.
Three foot six? Okay. So, in, in any case, we, we will be able to make that difference up on the exterior. So we looked at options. We looked at three options, and the first two, option A, we looked at an entirely new facility on-site, and we looked, when we looked at that, we determined that we would have to completely demolish the building, and we would have to rebuild it from scratch, so we'd have all new, new structure and construction. So as we looked at that, that option, we determined that it would be in the range of 20% more than renovating the existing building. So we ultimately rejected pursuit of that, that particular, Dan has some information about construction costs, projected construction costs on that option, but we didn't look at it very seriously once we determined that. Option B, we were looking at, would we do something less? Could we renovate just half of it? And would we, there would be cost savings, but we would still be spending all this money on infrastructure and everything else, so all those costs would be the same. So in the end, we decided we rejected option B as well, because if we're doing all that, we might as well build out the entire classroom building. So we ended up with a full renovation in, that we pursued in more detail. In, in a very general sense, the program included an entry area and an office space, very similar to what we have now. Again, we, we made some adjustments for the ADA, ADA accessibility, and the other major difference is we'd have an elevator that we'd be installing in that area. Classrooms, we have eight classrooms on the main level, the upper level, and four, four classrooms, Head Start classrooms on the lower level. The main differences that you'll see is that bathrooms are, are in all the classrooms, and all the support facility, support that we need for the classrooms are in the classrooms themselves and storage. Outdoor play area, we needed about 10,000 square feet, and we needed contiguous space with the classroom building, and you'll see that what we've done is we've removed a, a large portion of the asphalt parking area. Indoor play area, we've created a, a play area now at this upper level, at, at the three-foot higher level, so it's all at one level instead of the steps down. We've created two means, two means of egress, and also egresses out of the classrooms, which Dan will show you, and we have a conference room in the lower level that we've added with windows to that main space. We have a kitchen that is really going to be a warming kitchen. They won't be preparing food at, in that kitchen. They'll, they'll be distributing the food and warming it in, in that space, and then we need janitors closets and other support space on both levels.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you for having us. So I'm lucky enough to be able to present the new, fresh ideas and the fun parts of the design tonight, so once again, thank you for having us. So Glenn's mentioned several things. This first image is the existing front of the building, believe it or not, and what we've done is created a, an approximately 10,000 square foot green play area when you first enter the current parking area, so we've gotten rid of a lot of that sea of asphalt. What this rendering also depicts is the current frame system. It has a new cladding system, maybe a Tresparane system or recycled glass. We've taken a lot of greening ideas for the new design to make it efficient and bring it up to code, et cetera. You can go to the next slide, Dan. We've looked at ADA codes, we've looked at the CHIPS, we've looked at the Rhode Island codes, we've looked at Star, Bright Star. We've looked at all of the codes to bring this building up to 2014 and actually make a nice 2015 building approach. This site plan ultimately shows you in option A where we, the configuration kind of lightning bolts or zigzags in. We have approximately 50 spaces here, and that would be that, that road that is, the playground that's currently there, we, we paved that and bring it in this way. Ultimately, what we're doing is we're creating with all A, B, and C schemes, we're creating a ramp right here, kind of l-ing in from the front of the building, and you'll be able to see it clearer in some elevations, but there's a, you come in and there's a bus drop-off, so as we move ahead in the drawings, there's an upper level which has the Newport School Systems, which is, oh, you're going, there you go, way too fast. And then the lower level has the Head Start Classroom, which is four lower, eight upper, but it's important for me to tell you now during the site plan, because the drop-off is here, and there's another entry for Head Start here, and you'll see it clearer as we move ahead. The second scheme, scheme B that Dan has up, is the, the old asylum building, the poorhouse, I, I believe it was called.
Convent.
The convent. Oh, okay. Historically, Glenn, who was the original architect?
It was an asylum?
It was a poorhouse.
It was.
Really?
Yes. So that building that's on Broadway, we come in and it kind of, now the flow kind of just pulls you into a drop-off in the front, and then there's a, there's a drop-off in the back. This one has fif, about 52 spaces. And then the third one is Scheme C, which would possibly propose either dismantling or pushing that building in the front. We looked at three schemes. We were recommending B. So let's get to the inside of the building, Dan. So ultimately, what happens, oop, first floor, please, next one. There we go. Here's that ramp we discussed. So currently, I believe someone had asked about where that current ramp is. It's right up over in here where there's that lift, okay? So now we have this new ramp to code, and it creates another entry vestibule. There's visual access, there's admin, there's a lounge area, which could also be a leading area for the upper level, and here's the new elevator that kind of connects the upper and lower level. We've created back-to-back plumbing for each of the eight classrooms, and there's a shared door for, for visual access for, you know, someone maybe able, needing to man each room. We'd have Dutch door systems, half-walls, visual connections as needed in the design. There's a egress here and an egress here. Some of the window bending you'll see in the elevations has changed along the edges because of the new bathrooms, so we're able to infill a little bit, and we're going to try and control a lot of the heat gain with the windows as we have the new designs with screens, et cetera. Next, Dan, if we go back, thank you. So at the lower level is, here is that drop-off and connection to come in through this door, and this purple piece right there is a security desk to monitor at the lower level coming in and out, so we've taken a little notch out of this room. This is a larger classroom. So there's four classrooms down here for Head Start and back-to-back plumbing again, and we've infilled this floor, so we asked about what that change in elevation was, and now we've brought it up three foot six, and it's all flat, so now we have an opportunity for our mechanical systems underneath. And underneath that area, or above that area, is this indoor shared activity area, activity space, and then there's a kitchen, which I believe the meals are served in the classrooms, and there are only warming needs right now, so we've designed it to accommodate that. This is a nurses' station and mechanical, and this is where the existing oil tank is, and this new design would be upgraded with gas. This, this right here is another important venue. Right now, there's a light well in here, and we've carved this out, you come in, and this is a conference room with a shared visual connection, and these windows also, for these classrooms, would be lowered so the children, the three and four-years, four-year-olds can actually see out and have a visual connection to the outside at an appropriate level. Next. So this is a 3D view of the proposed scheme to come in. We've ghosted in the convent building, and here's Broadway, so you can come in and slip down this way, and there's, there's a lane to pull over for two buses, and you can come in, and here's that ramp to go up. This is where the old oil, the existing oil is. Next. Here's the, the approach for the compositional elevational changes. So this is that rendering we had shown you at the beginning, which has the new, a new face, basically, a fresh new look, and in the back, there's a, there's a screening system with a canopy, and a little canopy over here as well to bring the people in at the lower level, and then we have this, this new banding of windows and the infill with, with new materiality in between where the bathrooms are that I showed you in plan, and here's that new door on the side to get in where there's that indoor play area. Next, Dan. And then, these are the building sections. I know they're hard to read, east to west, and these are the north to south ones, but ultimately, thi, this is where that whole floor gets built in now, so we don't need to worry about any type of indoor ramps, so everything's all at one level. Dan, I think you're, that's an enlarged section, and I believe you're up next.
Thank you.
I'm Dan Weston, and you notice they put the old guy up here to take the shots, don't you? What I'd like to be able to do for a second is go back and explain just a couple of, I think, very important items that contributed to the design. Number one, you notice that the upper level is the Newport School System, the lower level is Head Start. The reason for that is that under the state regulations for early childhood, the kids can actually walk down a flight of stairs. It's permissible. With Head Start, the kids have to be on the same level all the time, so that was the reason for stratifying the building the way that we did, was to be able to allow all eight classrooms on the upper level for the Newport School System, the four downstairs for Head Start, and the building works because we've got that level connection. The other point that we wanted to make was the addition of the ramp is more than just for handicap access, because also, in a fire emergency, if we had a lift where there's a lift now, if you've been in triplet, you know, you walk in the front door and there's a mechanical lift there. If you had a fire emergency, how do you make the lift operate to get a child who's disabled out of the building? You have to carry the child out. At least with a ramp in a fire emergency, you go out the door and you go down the ramp and you're away from the building. So that was a very, very important element for us, too, in the design, so I just wanted you to understand, they're not, you know, these are very necessary elements. The building structures itself nicely, as Glenn said earlier. It's a, it's a double-loaded corridor system. You can't get any more efficient in a design of a building than the double-loaded corridor. You all have, oh, good, you can't read it from here.
I have copies.
You've all got copies of the, the cost estimate, and what I'll do is take you quickly through it. We tried to take a look at this in terms, like I put my glasses on, too. And, you know, we're looking at this from several different viewpoints, but as Glenn said earlier, we looked at it as, first of all, as new construction. Now, the problem with new construction, when you look at it. Now, the problem with new construction, when you look at it, is that we have to demolish the existing building in order to utilize the site at all. There's no room on that site to build another building without taking the existing building down. So that means a complete demolition project, total demolition, including foundations. It also means re-sculpting the site to allow it to take a building. And ironically, the building we might put back in there probably would be a bi-level building because of the slope across the site. So we're not gaining anything by doing that. So in our conceptual cost model, we looked at that scheme where we do a full renovation. I do a lot of work in the state of Connecticut, by the way. And the state of Connecticut has a program they call Renovate as New. Renovate as New basically says that you take a building, you give it another, what they're looking for is 20 years of life, but in fact, you're doing a lot more than that because you're re-upping the building to completely contemporary standards. That was the vision that I used when we were talking about putting this building together. So I'm going to start at the top and tell you kind of what we're doing. And then we'll get to the cost model in a second. Starting at the roof, we're doing a new roofing system on rigid insulation at a proper pitch. We're going to be adding roof drains so the building drains better and we move water off the roof as quickly as we can. So that's number one. We're doing new faces. The existing roof deck is what is known as a tekton deck. If you look at it, it looks like shredded wheat. And unfortunately, it absorbs water like shredded wheat does. So one of the things that we don't know yet is the extent to which there are areas of damage on that roof. The good news is, it's very easy to repair it. You pull the old plank out. They've got new, much, much better than the 1960 product that we can put back in its place. So from that perspective, it's really fairly easy to repair the deck. We get into the lower space now. This is the vision I want everybody to have of this building. We're going to go in, we're going to demolish it, demolish everything we can. We're going to take out all the asbestos. We're going to take out the PCBs around the windows. We're going to do, looking at any lead paints and do, and just make a decision whether we remove it or encapsulate it depending on where it is. So we've got all that work to do. We're going to take out all the windows because they're single-pane. There's no thermal break in the, in the frame itself. So it's just like having a heat sink between the inside and the outside of the building. We're going to open up some walls and close some walls up. What we're looking to do ultimately is reduce the amount of window, and I'll get back to that in a second. All new finishes on the inside. We're leaving on the upper floor the existing walls in place as much as we can. We have to modify the doorways coming into the classroom so they're handicapped accessible. But that's relatively simple to do in this case. But we're going to repaint everything, going to take the vinyl asbestos tile off the floor. We're going to take down all the ceilings because, again, part of this is a completely new mechanical system. And we're suggesting that it be gas, not, not oil. And we think that that would wind up being much cheaper for you in the end. Brand-new lighting, using some innovative technologies like daylight harvesting, I'm sure you've heard that term. Occupancy switching, all that kind of good stuff that we can put into the system now to, to help modulate energy costs in the building. We get down to the lower level. That's where the fun begins because we actually do more demolition, I think, on the lower level than we do on the mid, the upper level. Taking out a lot of the walls, modifying a lot of the walls. But again, the basic structure remains the same. The big deal there is getting the building scraped out up against the foundation, punching doors and windows in so that we comply with Head Start requirements. And getting the second means of egress out of the classrooms and getting the window sills down where kids can look out the windows. So that's kind of a, an overview of what we're going to be doing to the building. It's, it's a complete renovation. When you walk into that building, it'll have all-new electric, all-new mechanical, all-new plumbing, all-new security, all-new fire alarm, a fire suppression system throughout the entire building and not just at the lower level. So we're really looking to fully renovate, repurpose, and reuse the existing building. To that extent, the model that you're looking at, the cost model in front of you, I really try to break things down into three categories, three categories when I look at renovation costs. There's heavy. Heavy means basically you're blowing it up and you're taking it out of the building. Medium, which means significant damage to the existing infrastructure, but a lot of it can remain. Light, we don't have any. Light would be scraping walls and repainting them. You know, we're going to repaint some walls, but it's not going to be any, any scale that really impacts the project at all. And you can see that the numbers, we've actually worked the numbers. We've met with a contractor. He's reviewed our numbers. So we feel comfortable that the numbers that we're presenting for the scale of work we're looking at are appropriate. We come down to the site. Now, I'm carrying a fair amount of money for the site because I know we're going to have to cut it up. I know we're going to have to re-mil it or replace it, reshape it. We're putting in a brand-new parking lot where the, where the play area is right now because, again, the play area has to be contiguous to the building. You do that, you take out parking, so you've got to make the parking up someplace else. So that's why the parking is where it is. Demo and hazmat. We're going to have a fairly significant amount of hazmat removal. We know that there's vinyl asbestos tile. We know that there's asbestos in places. We know there's PCBs around the windows. We know there's lead paint in the building. So we know that the demolition component of this is going to be fairly substantial. And then I had an allowance for skin wall pointing on the building, which is basically checking out all the brick on the exterior of the building, repointing it, making sure that it's all complete, there's no water penetration, and that we can protect the building properly. That's the construction component. You can see that that roughs out about $7.6 million, roughly. Now, one of the things when I do a budget, I'd like to make sure that we've got everything as much as I can within my power identified so that we know really what you're looking at for a project cost. It's more than just the construction. So this includes $300,000 removable equipment, $100,000 for kitchen equipment. Even though it's a warming kitchen, we're going to have substantial freezers and coolers and dry storage areas. We're still going to have to have those components and they have to be up to standard. Computers and security, that's a placeholder. Because, again, we haven't really talked about the security system or the degree to which we're going to put computers in the building. So that one is a little, we'll call it soft because I'm trying to make sure that I've got it covered. We've got general expenses like contract document reproduction for bidding, legal and review fees, and that's for fire code and, and those kind of reviews that have to be done. And you can see that when we get down, we even try to allocate money toward postage, even though you don't post too much anymore, but we'll allocate, allocate some money for it, too, bid as advertisements. So we've got a construction cost of seven, 536 or 636 because I can't read it without my glasses, with my glasses on. We've got professionals' fees of about $650,000. We've got owners' costs of 753. I've included because of the level that we're at in this. This is just purely conceptual, the 10% contingency. And then a 3% escalation because it'll probably be a year, a year and a half, two years out before we start construction. So in the end, if you take a look at the bottom line, it shows you about $9.9 million for the project. And that's a full project cost. That includes everything that I can identify for. I did take a look at the same model doing a new building. That number came up to $12 million. And basically, it's because of the huge demolition costs and the complete site restructuring that would be needed in that case really bumps those numbers up. Plus, you get all-new construction where here we're actually saving some money on our medium construction. You know, it pushes the overall dollar per square foot down so that that's where you get your 20% savings, roughly. So with that, I think there's an opportunity to reuse this building. I think it'll work beautifully for, you know, what you would like to use it for. I think it's, as Glenn said earlier, I believe the building has good bones. It's structurally sound. We haven't tried to change its character. We left it in the '60s modernist style just because if we try to do anything beyond that, then we really are going to start, you know, if we, let's say we want to go with trusses and a pitched roof. We're really going to start to push the dollar cost up. So with that, I can turn the question, turn this back to you and we can answer some questions. Yes?
I have one question about arsenic. Once you start removing that pavement, will you be subject to a, an analysis of the arsenic on the site?
We'll do, we'll have, when we, before we even start the project, we will do a full-scale environmental analysis where we are required to. By the way, I looked at the building from the side of the New England Collaborative High Energy School Program chip system. I think it's very, very easy for us to meet that requirement. And I can say that with some authority because I just did a $47.9 million project in Connecticut. Under that Renovate as New clause, we got lead gold out of it. So that, I have no, you know, I have every confidence that we'll certainly be able to meet the minimum chip requirements.
But I didn't see any allotment here for arsenic abatement or removal.
It's under, it's, it's under the demolition. That demolition number is trying to be comprehensive to cover all of the above.
Okay.
Yeah.
So this question might be for someone on the school committee, but are you familiar with RIDE regulations? Now, they, they had new school construction where they were reimbursing for 40% of the cost. Is there a difference?
Yes. It's not 40% anymore, it's 35.
It's 35, but is it, what about for renovation? Do they reimburse at the same rate?
Same rate.
Same rate. So that wouldn't make a difference then? Okay. That was a question.
Any other questions?
Just for the benefit of the taxpayer viewers, would you say, I know who paid for it, let them know who paid for this report?
It came through the Head Start program.
Thank you. My concern...
It was a grant.
It was a grant.
Yes, yes. So this was a collaborative effort between the school department and Head Start. And grant money was available from the feds and we did take advantage of that. So we haven't paid any costs for this. This was because we already are in a situation where we're renting space for our preschool program. The state of Rhode Island is moving forward as far as seeking grant money for school districts to open more pre-Ks going forward.
The grant was accepted today.
And, oh, good. And so the grant was accepted, I'm hearing, today, which is wonderful. And I did give this to Joe De Silva at RIDE to just share with the Department of Ed so that they could take a look at it, get some ideas. And then I was looking for Newport to see if there were some other grant opportunities for Newport, to see if we could participate in some way in funding a project like this.
So where would the money come from?
Present, presently, this, all right. All right, I want to be really, really clear for the TV audience. This is just an option. This is not something that is, I know, in our budget or we're planning to do. But going forward, I think we need to be comprehensive on the options we may want to consider for children of Newport today and for the future. And if grant opportunities are available going forward, I would like the city and the school district to be positioned in such a way that we're ready and available, we have a site available, to open a preschool going forward. But for right now, Mr. Larry, to answer your question, we're working with Head Start and our other partners in the city to seek grant opportunities to see if we can get any funding for this.
Colonel, I just want everybody to know, I mean, this year, we're three preschool classrooms short. And we're also, we were, we had to do some special rearranging with some special ed classrooms to provide for an extra fourth grade. So literally this year, we were clearly four classrooms short. And next year, when, when they go up, we're going to be five classrooms short. And this is a problem that we have going forward next year and, and everybody needs to be aware of it because there is a shortage of space.
So you built the schools too small? PEL?
I think, I think one of the other things that we need to be mindful of is that the pre-K movement is alive and growing. And eventually, we will have to find housing for three and four-year-olds. Okay? And we know they won't fit in PEL because that building was built for just so many classrooms. Now, more kids are coming. I don't know where they're coming from, but they're coming. And we have to be prepared to house them.
So again, this is an option. This is to better position our district when the reality with the pre-K continues to grow. And I would just like the committee to have options whether we rent space, whether we reconsider looking at some, the one and only building we presently still own, whether we want to refurbish that building. It's, it's just an option. And we have to look, I also am aware, we need to look at our present buildings that are available to us and if we want to consider restructuring, re-grading at different levels going forward. I just feel it's best we're prepared. And this is, and it was a grant opportunity. We took advantage of it and it was no cost to any of the taxpayers or to the school department.
Colonel?
Yes?
I just really wanted to thank Newport Collaborative. First of all, I'm excited that it was a group that was chosen that live in Newport because they have a vested interest in seeing these things through. You know, they know the history.
Northeast.
Northeast Collaborative. It was Newport, right, at one time. You changed.
Northeast and Newport.
Northeast and Newport.
You just made Glenn feel really good.
This report is excellent. I mean, their, their information in here and the detail you went to is outstanding, the pictures and everything. So, I mean, this is, you know, I'm sure it's going to really help us going forth and I'm just glad that we could work together on this.
Yes. And Mike Harbone, Linda La Liberty, Ed Collins, Amy Donnelly Roach. It's been a team effort, this whole project. So again, I want to thank everyone personally as well because it, it shows you detail and it also, again, it's, it's an option.
Thank you for the floor of comments. Dan, Dan, Dan and I appreciate it. I just wanted to say how much we enjoyed working with the group. Everyone was involved, Ed, Amy, himself, and, you know, it was just a great team effort. And look forward to hopefully further...
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Guess what we skipped? We go back to the original agenda. We're off to public comment, item two. Anybody, anybody signed up? Anybody wish to comment? I see no resolutions or certificates of achievement. Is that right?
That's correct.
Student activities, we've taken care of. We're now to the consent calendar. Somebody want to move?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Chairman? Good, good. I want to pull some, let's not pull some, that's all.
I move, well, go ahead and pull.
All right. I would like to pull the title change. I would like to pull the appointments administrator.
So you want to pull personnel actions?
Not the whole thing.
Which ones do you want to pull?
I want to pull the first two, title change and appointments. And then teachers, number three, five, and 11 going down the arrows. And par educators, number 13. Oh, 11, 13, it's 13 there, so. And that should be it, I think. I missed anything? Everybody's...
Anybody else?
Title change?
Title change, administrator, the pull administrator interim. And then they're going to follow the arrows down, arrow number three, arrow number five, arrow number 11, and arrow number 13. Because we can't mention it right. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. Thank you.
Three, five, 11.
And as far as three, five, 11, and 13 go, I can, one vote's fine in all those.
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve the consent agenda minus the noted exceptions.
Is there a second to that? Is there a second to that?
Second.
Discussion on the consent calendar with the, with the items, with the exception of the items that have been pulled. Ball, favor?
Aye.
All right, cool. Okay, now we get down to the exceptions.
All right. Start the title change.
Yep. Superintendent, first comment?
Yep.
Okay. This request is on the agenda because I do feel it's important that this title change is needed for several reasons. One is when I am not able to attend certain meetings or if there, there is a request for my presence, I do need to send someone in my place. I also feel that the individual is serving the position already. It is a, a position that is better and well-defined than the present title the individual holds. And I do think it's needed.
Please hold.
Okay. So tonight, I fully support that our superintendent in wanting to have this position. But what I, what I can't support tonight is I feel as if this needs to be posted, that this position, and I'm going to go to some, some of our policies, just read just a line or two from them because I think this is really important. It says here that "Any and all qualified Newport public school employees and Newport residents shall be guaranteed an interview upon submission of a completed application." I understand that this is just a job, that we're changing the job description, but I understand that this is just a job, that we're changing the job description, but becoming a assistant superintendent...
We're not. I'm not.
Well, not changing, I mean, changing the job title.
The title is the only thing being changed.
And keeping everything the same, I'm sorry.
Correct.
But what it's doing is, it is a promotion in that it's a position that leads into becoming, being able to be more favorable to a district. So I would want to make this available to all our administrators here in Newport, and that they would have had an opportunity. Because we've just, tonight, just now, we just, one of our administrators has just left to go to a different district, that happens, but she was out looking for, she became the director of curriculum.
Curriculum.
Curriculum, but she was also looking at assistant superintendent's jobs. So I feel very strongly that these jobs should be out for, you know, that this should be out for everyone. I also think, and I'm going to say that the committee, through the superintendent, our job is to recruit, support, and retain highly effective staff. I feel like without any kind of an interview process, and we are allowed actually to have an interview process through our interview process and procedures in number four, six, one, two, we can interview these people for these jobs. So although this one candidate may be the perfect candidate for it, I believe that without going through the process, I can't support it tonight.
So, Mr. Chairman, if you make a motion to table it and it fails, what happens? We go back to the same thing?
Yes.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to table this proposal.
Second.
All in favor of tabling? Opposed?
Fails four, three.
So that fails.
So back to discussion.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr. Chairman?
I have a problem with changing the title. The reasoning doesn't make sense. When you, when superintendent leaves, they can tell, say, someone's in charge, if she sends them to represent herself, the person does not need the title. This was done before, and it didn't make sense then, and it doesn't make sense now. When you leave the district, you would put someone in charge, so that's covered, because people know what you put in charge. If you send somebody in your place somewhere else, I don't think they're going to be impressed that, well, her name, there's not an assistant superintendent, well, we don't pay attention. I mean, that's kind of, it doesn't make sense.
I just, well, I disagree with that comment, and that's part of the reason why I'm asking, requesting this.
That was used ten years ago, eleven years ago, give or take, for the same reasoning. They, there is a statement, basically, there's been no extra cost.
Correct.
Now, you're telling me that when the contract is up in, into June...
Correct.
That the person's salary will stay the same, except for maybe a pay raise. It will not be a bump because of the title of assistant superintendent.
I think for any employee that comes before me for contract renewal, there'll be a discussion about the roles and functions they do now, and whether they're relevant to the work we're doing in the district, and they'll be paid accordingly. I can't sit here right now, and I don't think it would be right for me to do this right now, to have a conversation about how much I would increase one's salary.
Okay, because my thought is, if she stayed the same title, the odds are their salary would be increased by whatever percent the others might be getting, or maybe she might get a little more, but there would not be a bump in the salary overall. Because once she's assistant superintendent, they're going to look at other communities and say, well, they're making so much money at each community, this person's making ten or twenty thousand dollars less, well, that's not right, so they're going to raise the price. And I see, you know, we're saying, well, we're not going to do it now, but in June, when the contract's up, it's going to happen. And I hope it's written down, because that's what you're saying will happen if this job is put in place.
Mrs. Gaines?
I'm not torn at all on this question, because I think the fact that the superintendent has the confidence in this particular employee to be her second-in-command speaks for itself. The title change is warranted, because the person is doing the job without the title. And any professional wants to be known for the work they're doing. I support this, and I hope that the school committee will allow the superintendent to form her team as she sees fit.
Let's see if there's anybody else. Yeah, Mrs. Gaines, Doc Flores?
Without just repeating what Mrs. Gaines said, I would have to go along with this too, because it's been patently obvious that this individual is doing the, the, I mean, job is not a strong enough word, but fulfilling the position of assistant superintendent. And I think it's understood that if we're looking at a job description, she's doing all of this. So I think the respect that is shown to this person, the regard that we have for the work that is done, I would certainly support just changing the title, that's what it amounts to. And I think it communicates to people outside of the system exactly what is going on here.
Mr. Leary?
Yeah, what's her title right now, Mrs. Jemaine? What's her title right now?
It's Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, I believe.
Okay, so Executive Director of Teaching and Learning. So to me, it's not about the job, it's not about her, it's about the job she's not doing. So we had to hire somebody at Pell this year to do half her job.
That is not correct.
Okay, so what was that person hired for?
That person was hired to help lead, to help lead teaching and learning, as well as run the building. If you remember, back in June, the model I showed to the community, to this committee, and to the Pell staff, was we wanted to create opportunities for teachers in our school district to try other types of leadership roles, not necessarily have to go into a principalship role. And for the Pell staff, as I shared with all of you, and I shared with the staff, I felt it was important that the school, the teachers, the people in the building, lead the building and take on the roles that best fit the needs of the school building. The two people that applied didn't necessarily have the title or the certificate for principal, but what they're doing right now is they are helping lead that building. That particular individual is very good, and has actually won state award, Principal of the Year, for the area of teaching and learning, and is leading one of the major initiatives at the Pell School for Common Planning Time and Implementation of Programming. That is what an assistant superintendent, I'm sorry, assistant principal and a principal does in a building.
But her job title doesn't say that.
No, it does not, because the person does not have the certification.
So past, her, that being said, if you look at her job title, one was vice principal, one was for teaching and learning of the building at Pell, so I think that's part of her job that were given to somebody else. Number one, past reports we've seen from her have been dismal.
Mr. Leary, I'm going to caution you at this point, of what you should be saying or should not be saying.
I'm saying, I'm looking at reports that we've received, you know, they're not, I don't see a capable analyzing data. Last year's kneecap, last year's kneecap report has less than fifty words in it. Fifty words, less than fifty words. This year's star assessment has been botched up, you know, professional development this year hasn't been that good.
Mr. Chair, I have to, I have to.
That's not part of the discussion.
Well, Mr. Chairman, to let you know, that when you have the floor and you recognize me, the point of order is that I have the floor until I relinquish it. The only way, the only way to give this, you pull the vote.
I have the option, if you're out of order, you're out of order.
I'm out of order?
You're not taking up other topics.
That's all the topics.
Stay on this topic, otherwise you're out of order.
I'm on the topic. I'm asking what she's doing.
Not this topic.
So you can call, what you can do is call the vote, but you can't at this point. So I will call Neil in this tomorrow and make sure, let me hear the tape.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Mr.?
Two points I want to make. One is, I was the last person that they changed the title from Director of Personnel Services to Assistant Superintendent. And the reason they changed that was, as Superintendent said, they had me going out in the community to a lot of different events, and people wanted to have what they perceived was the attention of the central office, and they felt that that title gave people in the community, you know, that level of attention, because somebody was showing up who was the assistant superintendent, not the director of people personnel services. So, I mean, that was the title change. I would tell you, Mr. Phelan, that I did not receive a raise when I took that job. I got more work, and in the subsequent years after that, I never received a larger raise. I got the same raise that everybody else got, so that money never went up. The other thing I would say is, you know, we've hired a superintendent, she's been here for a period of time, she's met all the administrators in the system, I'm sure that she felt that there was some other administrator in the system that would be the person to put into that slot, then she may be coming in front of us tonight saying, I want to rearrange some people, I'm going to put one person over here, I'm going to put this person over there, which she has the right to do. If we're suggesting that we're going to go outside the system and advertise to the general public that we want to bring somebody in in that position, you know, it's going to be very hard to go out and find somebody that's going to come in and have the knowledge and experience and the history that we have from our own administrators in the system. And last time, we took a little heat because we didn't look carefully at promoting people from within. Now we're in a situation where we're being asked to, you know, support the superintendent, it's, you know, we're hiring somebody, not hiring somebody, we're using our own staff within, in the system. So, I mean, I think that we're doing what we should be doing, and I'm going to support this.
Well, I want to just make, I haven't jumped in this conversation. We hired a superintendent who's had experience in three major school districts, has been superintendent, and I just think she has a lot more experience on this particular subject than any of us, and I would recommend that we follow her recommendation. Now, Mr. Ball?
Okay, to Mr. Powers' point, I guess my thing was, I don't think that we have to open it up to everyone outside the district. My concern was opening it up to the people inside the district, and so that was my concern. And mine is not, I'm not talking about job performance, or, you know, that really, if she were to go through the process, she more than likely would be the person that would come out on the other end, but I just don't want to see these opportunities closed off to some of the people in our district, that's all.
May I?
Yes.
Okay, so I thank all of you for your comments and hearing your input. I just want to state, as Dr. Schumaker said, you hired me to be the superintendent of schools here. I have been here nine to ten months. I have worked with the leaders and administrators on our staff. I do feel it is important to have a second in charge, and a second in charge that is recognized, not only by the community, but by the staff as well. I also understand the responsibility I have as far as evaluation of personnel, and whether or not someone is capable or not capable of handling the position, that is my job, and that is my role, and if someone's not cutting the mustard, I should be taking care of that. So I want to be very clear. I would not be making this title change recommendation if I was not certain that this person is the person that should be in this seat. I also want to stress with all of you, part of coming into a district when you already have incumbents, and you have people that are already in the position, a major part of my role is to build a team, an effective team, that can help bring the district to the next level. I need my team, and I need my staff to know that I support them, and I'm willing to take a chance on them, and also support them when they want to take on a challenge. So I thank you for your comments, I just felt I needed to share that with you, and I feel that the title does make a difference. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I move the question.
Move the question, second on that? All in favor of moving the question? Aye. Okay. All those in favor of changing the title, please raise your hand. One, two, three, opposed. Okay, next item?
Next was appointments, Ms. Jemaine?
Yes.
I don't, I don't have a problem with the appointment at all, I'm very pleased with it. I just think that five hundred dollars a day is a, one hell of a stipend, personally, and I can't support that, so, again, I want to be crystal clear, it's not with the appointment, it's with the money. I think it's too much pain for somebody to come in and fill in five hundred dollars a day.
And, and I'm, and as you can see, I'm nodding my head and I'm looking at you, I have to say, I got a bargain. That particular role ranged from that price to seven hundred and fifty dollars a day. And the person was very clear with me and stated to me, you know, that's it, if you want to try, go ahead, but I don't think you're going to find anyone. And you know what? I had a hard time. So that's where I'm at. It's a central office position, it's a very delicate, important position, and I hear you on that.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Having done that work and been in that position, and having done that work in other districts for similar money, I was going to tell you that that's a position in this district where we have over two million dollars worth of out-of-district tuitions. You bring somebody to that position, they make one mistake, and one kid could cost you seventy-five thousand dollars. The person that we're bringing here is somebody who's been here, we know her track record, she knows Newport, she can come into the district, she can, you know, hit the ground running, she can keep us moving forward, and she can also help us, because she is working in the state and knows the state, help us go out and recruit somebody to come into that position. She knows who the players are in the state. She's a very, very valuable person for us. And I agree with the superintendent, that, you know, that that, I think we're getting a good deal on this, because if she said no to us, I'm not sure who else you're going to get, and you're just, it's not an entry-level position. You can't just plug somebody into that job. They have to have knowledge of lots and lots of things in special education, and special ed's very complicated. You oftentimes get into, you know, legal battles with people on placements of kids, very sensitive stuff, no room for error, no room for mistakes. So, I mean, I'm happy that she's willing to come and work here, and I think that, you know, we're getting a good deal. We're not paying any of her health care, we're not paying any of that other stuff, it's a straight thing, and quite honestly, by the time they take taxes out of that, she's not going to be seeing that kind of money.
And to be, and to be frank, when we had initial discussions, the person may not have to come into the district every day. It may not be a five-day-a-week, there may be in the beginning, there has to be some reacquainting with staff and getting a good handle of what's going on, but initial conversations were that eventually that would, it may not be a full five-day per week. Right now, I am requesting that she get as much business done as possible. She will be helping us in a search, but I want to remind the committee also that you have options there as well, on what you want to do for the future. So she will be available to us.
Mrs. Gaines? Superintendent, will she be taking on all of Amy's duties?
Yes.
Oh.
I'm, I did, I will let you know, I did offer to help in the attendance with Eddie, and I had been working with the attendance officer, so I had been focusing more on that, so I'll be taking over the attendance part.
What about the bus? Did Amy do that?
Oh, yes. She'll, she'll be working with Joan on that as well.
I'll entertain a motion to approve.
So moved.
Second. Further discussion? If not all in favor, please say aye. Opposed? Next item, go.
So Wendy, for the record, I was counting those arrows wrong.
Yeah, I noticed that.
My concern, my concern was the positions, that's why I can vote them all once, the non, or not budgeted positions.
Oh, okay. Is that what, yeah, okay.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I counted the arrows wrong.
All right, that's okay.
My concern is the not-budget positions.
All right.
Okay.
It's like we're trying to throw another one in.
Yeah, so it's two, five, and ten, revenue numbers are, revenue arrows numbers are, if I did the positions, I would have got it right, but, so, I, for one, when you add those positions up, it comes to about a hundred and forty thousand dollars, and it's not in our budget right now, and I think, and I know, I know Superintendent disagrees with me, but I think that we've got some budget troubles, and, and I don't think we spend extra money right now, and we could probably rearrange doing some of these things. For example, I think there's one less kid that was at one point in grade one, that we could have moved the grade one teacher to the grade four teacher, something like that, but without going on and on about this thing, I just can't support it without the money being in the budget.
Okay, so I'm going to take one step at a time. I'm going to take the most recent statement. If you notice, I did give you a, a population chart for Pell, and I did share with you, based upon contractual language now, if we reduced any of the teachers, except for one grade, we would be over cap. So all the staffing at Pell is by contract. There's one grade level, we would be at cap. And that'll come up in the enrollment report, but the other side of that as well is, I've also mentioned to the committee that if you look at the trends of this district for the past two to three years, September and October are our... are our lowest attended, enrollment numbers. When we start to get our Navy families moving in and more officers coming in, the enrollment at Pell increases, and usually it is, at the Pell level, the elementary grades. So, if we did what has been done in the past, which this committee has faced in the past, we would run into the same old situation, where we would be at cap already or over in some of these classrooms already. And I hear, I hear the committee members about what the contractual cap language is presently, but that is what we are under at this point in time. So, instead of creating a situation where we have students already over-enrolled at this present day, we planned accordingly so that we're not in that situation at this point in time. If I reduced, and again, any of those enroll, any of those teach staffing, we would be over cap or at cap on one grade at Pell. The second part is the non-budgeted. And I'm going to go through them and just name them. The first one is a special ed teacher resource at Thompson Middle School not budgeted. It is required, according to the children's IEP, that we need the staffing. That is why. That is an IEP requirement. We did not have enough staffing for the children that we have with IEPs. That is something that's unpredictable when you have students move into your district. The next one is para kindergarten, not budgeted. That is the ninth grade, ninth kindergarten we had to open at the last minute because we were over, and we had enough kindergarten students that we had to open another kindergarten two to three days before school started. That is why that was not budgeted. We had a higher enrollment than predicted. The special educator Pell, again, not budget, not budgeted. That's a special ed para. We have a child that we, through the IEP process, is requiring a para ed. The next one, and I think that's it, but we already have hired a ninth grade, a ninth kindergarten teacher, again, and that was at the previous meeting, because of enrollment. These things happen in school districts. These things happen when families move in. The good thing is, we love children. We want children to come to our Newport schools. The other thing is, we do have to meet their, we have to meet service requirements of IEPs.
So, Mr. Chairman, if I go back, I, I hear you, and I understand IEP, loud and clear, but I think when you're doing these things, you look at what you begin to view, and you say, "I've got to keep some room in this budget to have, in case something comes up." And I think we hired extra people at Rogers that were not needed personally, four or five teachers, you know, and we could not, this, this problem wouldn't be here right now. Would not, would be, they would be saying they're budgeted items that are not-budgeted items. And $130,000, $140,000 we're spending extra right now is just something that I think is going to come back to roost on. So, I don't want to hear.
Okay, I just, I'm sorry, Mr. Chairman. I ask a good question.
Yeah, go ahead.
All right.
I'm on your side.
Okay, sorry. But, okay, so, I, I don't know if that's true about those positions being in the budget, because they're unexpected. We had more children than our enrollment projections cited. We had children move in, and through IEP decisions, we had to hire these other people. So, I, even with, and I hear you about your concerns about the staffing at Rogers High School, but I don't think we would have had these, because we really did put our best effort forward as far as enrollment projections and looking at all IEPs for the district, knowing how many people we needed to service the children.
Mrs. Bowlen?
Yeah. Well, this is, you know, it's something for a future meeting, but I'd like to see us communicating this in, in writing to the city council on a regular basis. Anytime we have an overage like this, let them know, you know, so that it's not a surprise at the end of the year. These were things that we contractually had to do, the IEPs. So, I think that, you know, starting next month, we, or, you know, during this month, get it written, be able to present it to the city council so that they know that we have all these, you know, items that we couldn't, you know, expect at the beginning.
Aren't we, aren't we doing that now?
Not.
We're showing, we are sharing the budget with them. I think to Mrs. Bowlen's point, we may not, when, so, we give them the budget. When these kind of actions take place, you know, it's, as you see, it's posted.
Footnote.
Yes, that's why, right. And that's why we're posting it now, so that you're very clear when you're voting on something, that you know it's either budgeted or not budgeted. So, we had a management discussion over the past week or so, the director of finance, director of HR, myself, and we sat down, because we want to be very clear with everyone, and especially when you're up here during these meetings, knowing what's in the budget and what's not in the budget. So, make it very clear. And, did you want to say something about?
No.
Mr. Chairman, please.
Mr. Chairman, I agree with Mr. Larry about his concern about the budget. And if it wasn't for that concern for the budget, I would vote for these jobs, because they're needed. But I think we did things previously that I don't think we should have done, and so, in which case, I think, if we hadn't done it, then I wouldn't be as concerned about the budget. So, that's one reason I'll be voting against it.
To facilitate the vote, I'm going to ask that we split the thing about teachers into two categories, both budgeted and non-budgeted. And ask for a motion on the non-budgeted teachers.
We already passed the budget once.
We already passed the budget.
We voted on the budget.
We already passed it. Just one vote on the non-budgeted.
All right. So, the non-budgeted.
Mr. Chairman? Well, I, I want to say two things. One is, I think to Mrs. Bowlen's point, keeping the city council informed about what we're doing is, is a, is a good idea, and I think that that should be done, you know, on a monthly basis, not just sending a document over, but kind of pointing out where some of the bumps in the road may be. And we do get a, a monthly report, or, well, biweekly report from the superintendent that updates us on a lot of things that are going on in the district. And I'm wondering if we shouldn't also put them on the list to receive that information, so they can see what's going on. Because, and when you see, when you start reading through that of all the things that are going on in the district and the, and the things that are happening, I mean, I think the city council, if they saw those kinds of things, they'd have a much better understanding of what's going on in the system. You know, and I, I agree with Mr. Leary. I have a lot of concerns about, you know, where we are financially this year, and where we're going to end up at the end of the year. You know, unfortunately, we've got some things going on here where we're, you know, required to do certain things. I, I've expressed my opinion in the past about class size at the elementary level. I think that that's something that, you know, that needs to be looked at because of, you know, the way, of the cost of, of what happens when you have one or two students. I think that that needs to really be addressed. And I also think that with the, you know, with, with the high school issue, with the teachers we put up there, I mean, we've had a lot of criticism about, you know, our graduation rate, our attendance rate, and so, this is our year to try to fix that. If the stuff that we're putting in there doesn't work, I will not be supporting those kinds of staffing levels next year. I'll pull my support out of that. I'm willing to give people a chance to do their job, and to do programs, and to work on the problems we have. And people have been criticizing us for not doing that, so here we are doing it. But it's, it, it costs money to do that. And at the end of the day, if people don't want that to happen, and they don't want us to spend that kind of money, we won't. But then they can't complain about the results we get.
I'll still ask for a motion to approve the non-budgeted.
So moved.
Okay.
Second.
Further discussion on the non-budgeted teaching positions? All in favor of hiring those teachers, please say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Did you get that, Wendy?
Yes, five to.
Five to.
Okay. So, we go on to action items, item six. And they're mostly policies, so I'll let, this is where Dr. Power, Dr. Flowers added. Do you want to run this part?
Yeah, the, the first one is policy number 1545. This is the second reading.
Yes.
Yeah.
And this, and it's the order of business at the regular meetings, and it was just changing the order of.
I move, I move adoption.
Second.
Second, that I have a concern. You know, when I reread this again, I caught something that, so, basically, in the past, what we've done is that citizens have been allowed three minutes, right? So, now, we're limiting it to 15 minutes. So, in essence, if we had a really hot topic, and Mr. Powers gave an example today, that we decided to cancel the band, right, at the school, that, I'm not saying it would ever happen, but if it did, and we had seven parents show up, only the first five could talk, because you're limited to 15 minutes.
I think the chair can make that decision.
We can always change.
You're saying, you can wait, but I, so I, I don't understand why we would just...
If you only had one person, then it took more than 15 minutes.
It can't. It says three minutes per person. It, it says it on here. So, no longer, so it's saying that no longer than 15 minutes, and they can address the subject on, for one subject, and no longer than three minutes. So, that 15 minutes, I'd almost think we should take it out there, because it's not necessary. It, it's going to put us in, lock us in.
Dr. Flowers?
Mr. Chairman, this is the standard. This is the standard, I think, in most school committees. It's the standard for the city council. Remember, these would be items that would not be on the agenda, of course. Not that they could not go on to another one.
Right.
And I believe, maybe it's implicit, I don't know. Correct me if I'm wrong. But it might be implicit that if it was an, an agreement, or if the chair felt that we could add a few more. I think this keeps the meeting going. Quite often, and this, I'm not saying here, not even, not in experience when I've been sitting at this side of the table, but when people start to repeat themselves and repeat what other people have said, this kind of keeps everyone focused. So, really, at a, three minutes presenting a statement is, again, that's par for the cause. That allows five people to get up and say something at the most. And that would be, I think, a little, a little out of the ordinary. That's my feeling about it.
Mrs. Gaze?
If you don't have a time limit on how long your public comment is going to last, it can go on for an hour, hour and a half, or whatever. You need to set some limits. I don't think anyone wants to sit through public comment for an hour, because as Sandra just said, a lot of it is repetition. Even though you ask people not to repeat, but to endorse what someone might have said before you, people get their time at the mic and the camera, and they're not going to give it up. So, I, I think we need to set limits, so we'll be here all night and get nothing done.
Mr. Bailey?
Three minutes.
Three minutes. Oh, yes.
[laughing]
One reason I can't support the 15 minutes is, how often do we have that many people come up and talk?
That's it.
Not that often. And if they do come up to talk, as a body, we should listen to them. It's only three minutes per person, and to hear what they have to say. That's what we're here for. I mean, they might call us up, but they might want to talk to us from here. I, I can't see why, how often does it happen? If we had to wait a half hour, what's the big deal? Forty-five minutes. I'm sorry. If it's that important for people, show up.
Can I finish?
Please, listen.
I just want to say.
Time is slow.
Oh, no. I'm done.
You finished. I just wanted to add, add to what I was saying. I just left a meeting where there were 75 people signed up to talk. Seventy-five, because it was a hot topic. I was so glad I had to leave early. Okay.
I, I have all the patience in the world. If 20 people want to show up and talk for three minutes each, I'll sit here and listen to every one of them, because they're a member of our community. And I'm not going to say to, oh, you're number one through five, so I'm only going to listen to you, and not the numbers from 15, you know, so...
From 15 to 75.
15 to 75, make it 75. I, it's, you know, whatever it's going to take to listen to everyone, you know, I'm going to be here to listen. And I'm, I refuse to only listen to the first five people that walk in the door. So, I just, I would like to, and I guess I will make an amendment to this, that we take out...
We're going to make a motion first to approve it, then we can make the amendment.
Well, shouldn't we make it just with the...
The motion has to be made before you amend it.
The main motion has to be on the floor, then you can amend.
All right, so I'm, I move that we accept, as, didn't we already do it?
Yeah.
Yeah, I thought so. Yeah. Okay, so, I'm going to make a motion that we amend it, that we take out the no longer than 15-minute section of this.
And then unlimited?
What?
Unlimited?
Up to chairman.
Right?
Up to chairperson.
Up, it says, um...
No, be up to chairperson. You get, you get 20 people, and decide.
We could get a chairperson.
There is, there's a strikeout on the last one. Maybe we should retain that. The chair shall set down.
Well, so, if 20 people walk in, and you want to limit them to a minute each, that would work too, if you saw the numbers on the list. But I refuse to only give the first five people who walk in a chance to talk.
I'm going to add to your amendment.
Okay, so, add to it.
When you take out the 15 minutes.
Right.
Re-instate the last sentence.
Right, okay, so that they...
The chair shall set time limits.
Yeah.
So, depending on the crowd, he can determine.
And the people that sign up. Right, okay. So moved.
Second.
So, Wendy, what do you have now?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
15 minutes comes out, and the chair comes in.
All right, the first motion, that was just...
Yeah, let's get this one straight. We don't want confusion.
The motion to amend was to take out no longer than 15 minutes, reinstate the last sentence, the chair shall set time limits, and that was that being amended.
So, let's use that as our motion. It's up for discussion.
Just to prove it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Seven zero?
Now, back to the main motion.
Was that seven zero?
Yes.
No.
Oh.
I'm opposing it.
Dr. Flowers is opposed.
Six one.
Okay, we go back to the main motion as amended. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The main motion.
What are we, what are we doing?
To no longer, to no longer than 15.
Okay, so we should be in charge.
No longer 15?
No.
So, all in favor of the main motion as amended, please say aye.
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 Opposed?
Wait, wait.
The main motion as amended.
As amended, thank you, yes.
Okay.
So, I pass. All right.
What was the count?
As amended, as amended.
No, that's why I opposed that.
I was going to say that.
Six one.
Six one.
Yeah, six one. I opposed it.
I thought I just read motion to be amended.
You did.
Well, first, you had to allow it to be amended, and then we amended, they amended it.
It was the first vote to approve the amendment.
I voted against it.
Then the second motion.
Was that first?
Yeah, Gaines and Becky. Becky seconded the discussion.
And the main motion as amended.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
I have...
And that was six one?
Yeah, I was the one.
Just for clarification and clerical purposes, is this considered the first reading or the second reading?
Second reading.
So, the second reading and adoption. All right, so, Ms. Gazer will send this out, written as requested, and please make sure if there are any comments to send them to us. Thank you. Yes.
I know.
Yeah, make sure it's...
Because they don't make it in.
Six point two.
Okay, this is 1710?
Yes.
This is the parental involvement one on the second page. That's the only change. Was adding a couple of phrases and deleting specific partnering agencies, because there were just so many others. And was there any suggestions from, since the last meeting? No concerns?
Okay, I'll take a motion for approval.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Going too fast. Bob?
No.
Yeah, Bob's was good. Not me, Bob was.
Bob made it, made the motion. Larry seconded.
I didn't second it. I'll second any.
Who seconded?
Don't put me down in that category.
Okay, that one's done.
Seven zero, correct?
Uh, yes.
Yes, yes.
Yeah, I voted for that.
That was an easy one.
Six point three?
1760 is the new policy about the suspension of policies. That was the one that we really agonized over.
I moved adoption.
Hmm?
I moved adoption.
Okay.
Second?
Second.
Second about?
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Tom?
Five to.
Six point four.
I was right.
Is the other one now? Oh, jeez, that was 1760.
Fifty-one sixty.
Fifty-one sixty. Where's my 5160? Oh, that's good, thank you. I'm sorry. For whatever reason this one. 5160 is the attendance one. Oh, that, yeah, the only change was on that first paragraph, this reflects the Rhode Island law change, that students have to complete 18 years of life, you know, before they could drop out.
So moved.
Second.
Any further discussion on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
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 Close?
And then sixty-three thirty-five?
Yes.
Sixty-three thirty-five, those instructional mandates for admission to kindergarten. Okay, this is, yeah, okay.
State law.
Is there a second?
Second.
No.
Well, let's, let's look at that.
Any discussion on this?
Yes, Chairman.
Yeah.
When we met last time, I think we were pretty clear that we were looking for the option three to be reinstated, that if somebody came to the superintendent with documentation and their date of birth was very close to the cutoff date, that the superintendent would have the ability to allow that child to attend school. And I thought that when we left here last time, that we all, I know, we took a vote that said we wanted that back in there, so I don't know, I think there was a misunderstanding along the way.
Okay, if it was, yeah. The first paragraph, that was all accepted, is that correct?
Right.
Okay, and then was just putting some ands and taking out an and.
Yeah.
So, that sub-paragraph three in parenthesis to leave it in?
Should remain.
Yes, correct.
Could I ask a question? When you talk about a child's birthday that's very close to that, are you talking a matter of, that's kind of subjective, is it a week or a?
Month.
Well, a month, I don't know.
That's why you leave it up to the superintendent, to make that evaluation.
Okay, the discretion of the superintendent, the superintendent's judgment.
So, there's a motion, eight motions on.
You gotta make an amendment.
Now, you're gonna amend it? Oh, I do?
No, 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 it was a question, 'cause I just wanted to-
And then put three back in.
To clarify that.
You're approving it with the inclusion of item three.
We're leaving item three in. The three in parenthesis.
We're gonna have to approve the amendment. Do you delete?
To include.
To include.
Wrong, and then, is there a second on that?
Second.
Discussion on that amendment. Dr. Flower, you, any comment on the last paragraph?
No, I-
It was just an oversight.
Yeah.
Okay.
Because too much was going on, this is what I said earlier, we have to make sure we know who's saying what.
Alright, all in favor of the amendment?
Aye.
Aye.
Oh, I was on aye.
Close? Okay, all in favor of the motion as amended?
Yeah.
Aye.
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 Seven oh?
That's it?
Nope, that's it.
That's it?
That's it.
Thank you. Item six point six, Pell School project, request for additional services.
At the last meeting, you asked for further details regarding a project for Pell School. The facilities director, Ed Collins, is here to answer any questions. Tried to simplify it as best as possible, so it was clear for the costs.
Go ahead.
So, you requested a breakdown, and the breakdown came out to approximately twenty thousand eight hundred dollars to construct the greeting desk in the foyer, and another ten thousand dollars to address the outside, some type of signage and light that would actually push people towards that main entrance, and stop the confusion of what door to go through. So, that would be the budget for the project, along with their design cost of approximately thirteen thousand dollars. Now, some of that, we've already moved the electrical and the security system over, so some of that would come off their scope. So, those are budget items. So, they actually went out, did some field measurements, came back with a concept and an idea, and you approved it, then you would get a final thing, but that's a budget to go with.
Any questions for Ed? Entertainer motion, approve that?
So moved.
I have a question.
Your second?
A second.
Okay, aye, Mrs. Gazer.
Question, what do we, maybe this is for Mrs. Gaines or our superintendent, what do we have left in that, in our contingency fund at the school?
I have no idea. Well, I do have an idea, but I'd rather not take a guess at it without looking at the hard numbers.
Is, no idea?
Yes, I do have an idea, but it's not one that I would express.
Is it, can somebody just give me a ballpark, is it, are we gonna be in the hole?
Oh, no, absolutely not, no.
We still have contingency.
We still have contingency, I'm sorry.
So, this would be covered by what?
By the building.
Oh, okay.
Right.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Aye.
Close? Okay. Trip up preschool, we've already done budget report updates.
Thank you. In front of you right now, you have the updated budget, I believe Ms. Halyria had requested twenty thirteen fourteen budget and fourteen fifteen. Director of Finance, Joan Tracy, is here, if you have any questions.
Yes, Joan, could you, uh, come-
Hold holder?
No. She can't say, no, you can't say I didn't call you. So, why don't you explain to the public, again, stand up, where we at, what's that? Last year, let me know it's last year.
Yes, as I told you at the last meeting, that was the day I finished this report to the city, our unrestricted deficit, fund balance deficit, at the end of the year was eighty-six thousand three hundred and twenty-two dollars. That is on our unrestricted fund ten that we actually do an operating budget on. The city includes our capital projects funds as part of the city, as well as our fund ten, as part of the city's general fund, and that's mandated by generally accepted accounting principles, and you may not like it, but that's the way it is. So, the first page of the report that I presented has company ten, the unrestricted fund, and that's the fund that's actually budgeted. The second column is our capital projects fund, which is actually composed of three sub-funds, housing aid money, the wireless project that's currently going on at Rogers High School, and the NAC Tech money, what remains of what the state gave us when we took the building over. So, those three add up to the capital projects. The third column, the state pension, is the state of Rhode Island makes an on behalf payment for all teachers' pensions in the state, and we have to report that in the financial statements. And then you get the total combined is the sum of those. But, the most important thing to us is the cap, is the company ten unrestricted column. And then attached to that is the detail, the detail, June thirty report, in a similar manner that you receive a monthly financial statement. So, there's the revenue page, and then there's three expenditure pages. Four expenditure pages, sorry.
Okay, so, question number, only three questions. Question number one, where are we gonna get this eighty-seven thousand, eighty-six thousand dollars?
The school committee at the June meeting passed a motion to take the money from an account that the city is holding on our behalf for capital projects, that they say we're allowed to take. Currently has, I believe, three hundred and five thousand dollars in it, and we will take the eighty-six thousand, or whatever the final audited number turns out to be. I don't expect a difference, but I was an auditor and it can happen.
So, do you remember the vote? Wendy, can you look up that vote for future reference, how people voted on that? I mean, people voted to take money out of the capital improvement fund. I have never, I'm sure I voted no. I have never, never once voted to take money out of the capital fund. So, we're gonna take money out of the capital fund to pay for a deficit.
Are we talking about the one percent?
No.
I'm talking about, I'm talking about-
No, this is money held by this-
I believe it was at the June thirty special meeting when we passed, finally passed the official, final fiscal fourteen budget. I think it was June twenty-sixth.
So, if I can correct myself if I'm not, but I have never, never, once-
Well, I'm sure it's in the minutes to, uh-
Yeah, so I wanna make sure the public knows that. I've never once voted to take money out of the capital fund. I would take money out of the capital fund to put into the general budget. Shame on us. When we could've in January, when I asked in January, I asked in January to freeze this budget and look at some items, like four thousand dollars for catering and so forth. We could've done that and maybe made up some of that eighty-six thousand dollars, but we didn't. We continue to go forward, we didn't. So, that's, I just wanna know where the money is coming from. Now, the other two questions I have, Joan, on three line items, I have a lot more, but I'll do it three, or two items. Substitutes, we budgeted four hundred and five thousand last year, we spent four hundred and forty-two. This year, we cut that by a hundred thousand dollars?
Yes, we did.
Okay. Next one, healthcare premiums. We budgeted twenty, two point five million, and we spent two point six, six point, another sixty-six thousand dollars. What did we cut that by this year?
I believe it was the five point six rate reduction, or the six point six rate reduction that we received from the trust.
Correct. Four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. And then the last one, the reason I'm saying this is we went over those items, and we reduced them, so I'm really concerned. Last one, retiree benefits, it was three point seven, it went up to three point eight, went up by a hundred thousand dollars, and what did we reduce that one by? I have it if you want. We reduced it by four hundred and ninety thousand dollars. So, we went over these three items, these three big items, we went over in all these three line items, and we reduced those three line items by almost a million dollars this year.
But we had substantial rate decreases by the trust for this year. We were paying less for health insurance than we paid in the prior year.
Correct. Five point five percent for the first time ever. First time I've been on committee.
Yes, I'm sorry, I don't remember the exact percentage.
Five point five percent, it was a decrease in health insurance. Okay, that's all.
Okay.
Thank you.
Anybody else?
Oh, yeah, I just have something.
Sure.
Thank you very much for the foods, chartwell's reports.
You're welcome.
They were very informative.
Except Colleen forwarded it to you.
Alright, well, thank you.
I would've just filed it, like I always do.
No, but they're very helpful to have them, 'cause I'm following it, and we're doing better this year, right now, so.
Right.
We did do an increase in the price of lunch, but our lunches are up this year, so.
And we expect to do even better, because we're catering the boys' club, boys and girls' club.
The supper, right?
Supper program.
Uh-huh. That's great.
So, there's positive news for revenues?
Yeah.
I guess we move on.
Seven point three?
Seven point three, Rogers High School, next steps for consideration. Mr. Collins, why don't you come forward again?
We were approached by the assistant principal at Rogers about a number of her concerns or things that need to take place in the building. So, we had a meeting with myself, her, and the superintendent, and we discussed putting a committee together. I have some concerns as far as my position as facilities, more of a nuts and bolts thing. She has concerns about programs and maybe moving some programs around, and some things that need to be done in the building. I think at this point, it'd be best for us to form a little committee where all aspects are represented, some parents, public, people in the school, and some administrators, to take a full look at Rogers, come up with a list of items that need to be addressed that support what we wanna do in there academically, and as far as programs, and also some things that are already obvious to us, like the roofs and everything. Get some numbers on them, put together a priority list, and then issue a report to the school committee, so that we could actually look at that, hopefully budget and start working on those things.
Terrell? Yes?
I just came in tonight from the sit team meeting over at the high school, and where this was presented to the parents. The sit team is the site, school improvement team. And it was very informative, and Mrs. Christiana was there, Mrs. Fisher, and she presented this, and there were some parents there that are interested in serving, you know, in serving on this. And I wanted to volunteer myself, I still have a student over there at Rogers, and I'm very interested in serving on this committee, if it was formed.
Sounds like it's a go. Thank you.
Okay.
Seven point four. Principal, principal search update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Fran Eames and Dr. Booth are overseeing the start of this search committee and the interviewing process for hopefully a new Rogers High School principal. I asked Ms. Eames to please send a timeline, so you're aware of what's going on, what our goals are as far as trying to finish the process, and if you have any questions, feel free to ask. For the general public, I'll read a couple of dates. Our timeline right now is, we're screening applicants, and we're submitting recommendations to the HR department now. Interviews are going to be set up on the twenty-first and twenty-second of next week. And then, once those interviews have been conducted, then we're going to look into next steps based upon the success or the comments of the interview committee. We have, everything is online, so everything's being screened electronically, and we're using our Aesop, SchoolSpring, I'm sorry, SchoolSpring online system to set up the appointments, et cetera, so everything will be done electronically to make it easier for the staff, to guarantee our, the applicants get in in a timely way.
So, today is the fourteenth, right?
Correct.
So, all the applications are in?
Yes, and they have been, and there's been a process over the past week or so for people to be reviewing them, and they're supposed to be sending a certain amount of recommendations to HR. They're gonna be compiled, I'll be reviewing those with HR, and then we'll take a look at how many people got selected.
You know how many applications you had?
Fifty-three.
Moving on to seven point five, Student Services Department, says Student Services Department's high transition.
Okay, so, I did put this on the agenda, as we've already discussed earlier, we have an interim now, Student Service Director, and I'd like to just have a brief discussion, or I don't know if you need more time, I'd like to hear the committee's thinking as far as how you would like to proceed about this position. I have been approached by Newport County Regional, and they're wondering, since we at this time do not have a permanent employee at this point in time for Student Services, if we would perhaps be interested in talking about purchasing services, or if we would be interested in looking at the type of programming they offer. Part of what I do know about the programs they have on Aquinic Island is they do have at all levels, elementary, middle, and high school, different types of behavioral programs, and they may even have autism services on Aquinic Island that they provide for their students that are now presently a part of Newport County Regional. This may be something you may wanna consider, it not only from a cost perspective, but I think more importantly, about keeping students close to home, and allowing them to experience their educational setting on Aquinic Island with, you know, possibly other families and people they know on Aquinic Island. So, that's just something. But tonight, I just wanted to share with you, or find out from you, get directions from, direction from you, as to whether you would like me to pursue this, look into this, and then have other options available to you, and do a cost analysis.
Yes, Mrs. Gaines?
I think we should look into this. We talk about the way to save money is by consolidation, having more numbers, I forget the term. But anyway, I think it's a good time for us to look at sharing services in this area. If it's gonna save some money, we need to look at it, we don't need to close our eyes We don't need to close our eyes to it. But what I'm wondering is if maybe we should have a workshop and talk about the pros and cons of this in depth and maybe have someone from the regional, um, what's it called? The regional office?
Office, right.
To come and talk to us about it.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Go ahead.
Oh, all right. Well, I was just, um, going to say that our busing costs are, for special ed are $350,000 a year. And if we could cut that by, first of all, doing all the things you said, by keeping those kids close to home. And also the types of programs, it's very difficult in a school district to offer autism programs, behavior programs, and, and really put those kids right where they need to be. But, you know, I think especially like I've heard some things that, you know, like it would be great if we could start some autistic, you know, specifically some classes just for those children who are autistic. And this would, you know, really help to condense the resources. So I'm all in favor of looking into it.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman? Chairman? You know, if I'm not mistaken, I think that, um, because this, this came up a while back about whether or not we should join the region. And if I'm not mistaken, I think our per pupil special ed costs in Newport are less than what the other communities are paying. And so while it would seem like we should be going in that direction, I think Mrs. Gaines's suggestion is a good suggestion. We should have a workshop on it. It, it may not be to our advantage to do that. I know that Portsmouth recently hired, um, a company that I've been associated with to do a study in Portsmouth on whether or not they should stay in the regional program or leave the regional program. I don't know if that report was ever finalized. I don't, I don't know the results of that. But I do know that when I spoke to Amy a while back about our program costs and, and asked about regional program, um, her response to me at that point was that our per pupil cost in special ed is less than what it is in the region. So I would just be careful about what we may or may not do with that because we, we may think we're going to save money. We may actually be doing a better job in-house at this point, and we wouldn't. And I've been a proponent for sharing services. I mean, I worked on the Unified High School stuff. I mean, I've worked on all, I'm all for looking at that stuff. But sometimes it doesn't always work out that way.
But you don't know if you don't.
No, I'm, I'm happy to look at it, but I'm just saying that people sometimes think that that's going to work and sometimes it doesn't work that way because there's other costs involved. And we may be the ones that end up picking up the costs of some other districts.
Yeah.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I think besides trying to keep the costs down, uh, I think, uh, really think our main goal will be, can we provide more and better services for our students, for the youngsters who would be, um, served by that? And the, the sidebar would be if we can save money also. But I think it was just in the paper this past week that Portsmouth is questioning whether they want to stay in the regional program. But maybe the, the just came up, but we, we might find, I think what Joe said about us going, um, and having a workshop on that and have people come in, that way we can just see what we want ourselves.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Wendy, you can find anything. I know you can find where Dr. Brogey did a cost analysis of this already, am I correct? Yeah, so we already have this cost analysis done.
That's from.
It might've been a year too old, but it was done the appropriate way we're at. So it's a very important thing, let's not reinvent this thing again if we've done it once.
Of course, see, I can just tell you, having a special ed kid in our family is it's the dollars of transportation and hiring people. That's the easy part of the equation. The other half of the equation is how do you know an autistic child is making progress? And would he have made greater progress in another school? And that's going to be the most difficult thing to try to, to come to an answer, still this equation, trying to balance costs against.
So may I ask for clar, for clarification? So, um, I, I, am I hearing if the workshop is agreed that you'd like me to explore, um, possible regional costs, letting, sharing everything? Regional costs, which I do agree with Dr. Power because I was in Portsmouth when we initiated that study there. And it does sometimes when you're the largest of the districts, it does cost you more. You're paying for others. So I wonder also if we can talk to them just about purchasing services, not necessarily becoming a member of the collaborative. And then I'll seek other alternatives that are out there as well, but set up some kind of workshop.
What kind of time does we talk in? Because I mean, they have $500 a day.
I'm going to jump on to, before I get in trouble, nine, seven point six.
Worry about Charlie, I'm the one who gets in trouble around here.
Mr. Phelan, you want to just, you raised the question, you want to just bring it, focus?
Well, my concern, how, the length of time that it'd take for us to submit something to be on the agenda. I think it should be shortened up than what it is. I think it's such, it's a long time. We, we expanded to a long time now.
Nine business days last night.
Nine business days.
Sure, okay. So I provided the, um, public can't see this, but you have a visual in front of you. So a calendar was sent out to you. There's a visual, and it shows when we have our meeting. And then it shows when we, what we have to do in order to have everything ready for the meeting. And presently, we ask you about, um, if you notice, and if you count back to your point, it's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, 10. It's actually 10 business days that we're requesting. We have the agenda items. So on that Monday, by that Monday before the meeting, we're asking 10 business days. You notice that staff has to prepare whatever you're requesting. Sometimes it's not a lot, sometimes it is a lot. And we want to make sure the information we're giving you is accurate. And besides preparing for a school committee meeting, the staff is also doing day-to-day business and other things that come up on the radar screen. So then we send out to the staff the requests and who needs to get what to Wendy, Ms. Gazer. And then so Friday at noon, she's asking for the staff for the backup. And then she's building the detail, getting copies made, because she also has to print out a lot of copies. Not everybody is online. If it were online, everybody was online, I will say, it would make it a little easier. And I'm sorry, I did have to say that. She asked me to say that. And I agree. And so then she builds the detail. And then we want to get everything out to you in enough time, so we try to get it out to you by Thursday. And then you have Friday to review your backup, Saturday, Sunday, Monday, if you have questions or anything else. And then we have the meeting. I guess what I'm saying, I, I don't know many other organizations that, I guess I'm asking, what are you thinking is possible for us to do?
Well, it, it's a longer time than we ever had to use before. My question, well, basically one question, does that mean if we put it by that Tuesday, that the administration, they have their things and they can't change anything after that point? So neither we could or the administration add something on later on after that, that Tuesday?
Wendy, all right, so Wendy, jump in if I say this incorrectly. So Wendy will, usually the agenda is, is set and, um, and posted by the Friday before the meeting, okay? So of course, anything and everything that, you know, we have up until that day in time. The problem is, we may not have the backup. So you want information or your whatnot. I'm not going to be able to have unless staff drop everything, get backup ready. And I'm thinking you're going to want backup and time for people to prepare for a presentation or to speak to an item? And maybe I'm misunderstanding.
It's Thursday when I actually post the agenda to Secretary of State. And then your packets are delivered, looked over, you know, blessed and delivered Thursday night.
Well, I just, I, I agree with Tom. I think it's much too long. I think as long as we get it to you before Thursday when you go to post, I think that I, at least the title. I wanted two items to get put on this agenda. I sent them in early last week, but I didn't make the 10-day. They're somewhat critical, but from my point of view anyhow, uh, about appointing a committee and, and talking about the pre-K stuff. And I just didn't get it in that 14 days or 10 days ahead of time. I got it in ahead of the, the day you posted. And all I wanted was just to, I just was to put a mark, we're going to talk about pre-K or we're going to talk about a committee. But somehow it didn't get in. And I agree with Tom that I would like to be able to, be able to, if you're not asking for a report from the superintendent, but you're going to give just an informational thing on your own, I think getting it to you before you go to posting would be adequate. Mrs. Gaines?
That last piece you, you added makes all the difference in the world. But I've seen Wendy on a Tuesday or Wednesday, the week before the school committee meeting. And the poor woman is totally out of her mind, literally.
It's every day.
But I, I think it's asking too much.
Mr. Larry, you owe an apology there.
To move, to, to say Thursday is the last day to submit items to the agenda. That's just not there. Unless you're going to add some staff in that office.
It needs to be posted.
You know, I, um, if there were items that we could add, you know, like it can't be just cut and dry maybe. That if there was something that could get added and this isn't a cut and dry policy. I know that Wendy does an incredible job of getting things out and without, she's like really, it's important to her that there's no mistakes made. And she is a perfectionist. And, and we appreciate that because the things we get from her, you know, are up to that level. And, and so I appreciate that. But on the other hand, I just, if there was something that just wanted to put on the agenda for a discussion item that didn't need backup or I would just hate to, you know, exclude the possibility of adding it.
So what's the feasible amount of days? 10 is, 10 is too much because what you think about this, we, after we end tonight, two weeks from today, we can't put anything on the agenda. You're still in October, you can't bring anything on November.
This is critical in terms of time, what I'm looking for.
I think a week before the meeting would be the most.
I don't, I think if you've got some, especially if you have an interrelated meeting between, just before the deadline, I don't see why you can't put a marker in to, to make a comment. You're not asking for a report, you're not asking for Joan to do a report and the superintendent. You're going to come through with a, with the information. You can do it on one piece of paper. And I don't see that there's any, I don't think the lack of staff should dictate the speed of the school committee. And if the school committee wants to move that forward, we have to either make staff enlarge so that you accommodate the, the needs of the school committee.
So, so if the under, may I, sorry. So if the understanding is, and, and this is it, if the understanding is if it's for discussion and no backup is going to have to be provided, then it is possible to just have a discussion item. If it's a discussion item and we need backup, and by backup, I mean if someone's going to provide a report or something like that, we're chasing people down at the 11th hour for backup. And that is, that is probably one of the most challenging things for us because, so that you're informed and you can make informed decisions. If it's, you, you need, if we, if you want to add something, but it requires backup, we need the backup. We can't have just, I'm just sharing with you, unless you want to come into the meeting and it's your meeting. So if you want to come in and have that discussion without having time to read the backup, that's another story. But from our, I'm going to speak from our office. Our, I'm going that you want as much detail and backup as possible before coming into the meeting so that you're informed for your discussion.
I would think so.
Well, Harry, I'll give you an example. This was a meet, committing meeting of the minute, the members of the pre-K committee. All it is is an aid. No backup was necessary. Put, gave it to her last, she gave it to somebody last week.
I didn't see this.
Yeah, I, so I sent it on and, uh, somehow or other, it's not on the agenda and, uh.
Should be five days.
Business days.
Five business days, thank you.
I think it's less than that, Bobby. I think it should be, if you've got some, if you had a meeting two days before that deadline and you couldn't get it on, and then the school, that is 30 days before.
You gotta post. Well, remember, you have to post, yeah.
As long as you have to get it on to get the, be posted.
Yeah.
And that doesn't add, if you add one other item, I don't see that that's a, a big burden to me, yes.
I just want to say one thing. I get all my information on, online, for whatever reason it wouldn't connect tonight. But that's neither, that's okay, but however, when you read your email, those of us who do read the email and the messages that come in, Wendy is working literally all hours. And all days of the week. So this is something we have to take into consideration. And the fact that the people, you, you, all these, the administrators, for those who have not worked in this field, they, you get to the point where, you know, you can do two things at once, but three or four are a bit much. I think we have to be a little more respectful of our people.
It was a big reason why Joe Eva went to the convention, brought back board docs, thank the Lord. But, you know, I still have to make three packets.
You still have to put it up there, yeah.
And with board docs, if somebody added something at the last minute, the numbers change like that, you know? And it's real easy. But if you've noticed, I have to go into the three packets and say, oh, now I got to change six point five, six point six. Or at the last minute, we kind of just put it at the end of the action, you know, at the end of discussion.
Well, we've done it before. My first case.
No, I don't have, but it was terrible. Know that extra time.
Come up with a date, Charlie.
It's not fair.
I think, well, it isn't, it isn't fair, it isn't fair for us who've gone to previous meetings two days before, need action by the school committee, and it can't be done for 32 days. I mean, it just slows the process down. And you're not going to be here forever.
Need a week.
All right.
So what's the number of days?
All right.
I would say a week. And the Tuesday before, you have to give staff time to do their job.
To put it together and post.
All right, so I, I'm sorry, I just got to, I, I just want to bring, put a reality check here. Tuesday before the week, we get all the agenda items Tuesday. That means Wednesday, Thursday, and Friday, staff has to drop everything to get backup done.
No, no, no. We're talking about these things that are added on.
Oh, with the last, oh, okay, all right.
Just want to leave the possibility.
But if it needs backup, you need, you need that time.
Okay.
If they, if a council member wants something on the docket and they have backup that they can hand to Wendy, or they don't need backup, it's just an idea that they want to discuss.
Just get it on before Thursday, that's all. Add to you before Thursday.
What's Thursday, the week before?
Before you do the, before you do the posting.
Tuesday's back to 10 days again, that's what it's starting, you're back to 10 days.
No, it's not, I'm not going to bother that.
No, it's the week before.
No, the week before.
The Tuesday of the week?
The Tuesday before the meeting.
Tuesday for me, which is three days?
Yes.
Or two days before posting?
Three, yeah.
Yeah, all right, Tuesday for me, there you go.
That's, okay, but just, I just, I just want to be really clear. The backup, that means it's prob, if it's an action item and requires backup, that's going to either be provided to us? I, I just want, I know, I know this is a difficult conversation for a lot of us, but I want to be really clear because if an action item gets sent to us on Tuesday, I'm just requesting that if the expectation is, and we will always make every effort, we have all the time. But if we're requesting staff to stop everything to get backup ready, it's going to be very difficult for Wendy to get all of that out by Friday night.
And do everything else they can do during the day.
Yeah, exactly.
So if, so I'm just, I'm just being really clear. So I'm hearing the Tuesday before, if there's no backup or the backup's going to be provided, we will get that on the agenda. And that's the request? Okay.
And Dr. Schumaker, I did not see this.
I sent it, I don't know who I sent it to, somebody in the office and.
Because it says December 31, 2013.
Right.
That's a long time, Charlie.
Long time to wait.
But I submitted it this week, so.
I don't know.
Item seven. Seven point seven, is it that next?
Seven point seven, yeah.
Yes, now the next one is a discussion item and director, the facilities director, Ed Collins here. He has shared with me the need to add two additional custodians as soon as possible. He has been going through the facilities, he has been reviewing. And at the last meeting, he did present a staffing chart to the committee that he felt best represents the staffing required for our buildings.
And I'll preface, I'll add to that, we had an executive committee in which you spent a half an hour discussing the need for these two custodians, correct?
Yes, sir.
So I don't think the school committee, but maybe you can briefly tell the public as to why you feel we can need the two custodians.
There are basic standards that are set for staffing schools. And you could argue, um, you know, a night custodian, um, cleaning the building can handle anywhere between 25 and 32,000 square feet. We're way over that. So we're not able, we're not capable of maintaining the buildings at any acceptable level at this point, let alone if we want to open the buildings for programs and events to the public. We're just, we're just not at those standards. And, and that's the problem we're having right now.
And your proposal?
My proposal would be to add a custodian at night at Pell and one at Thompson and take the split shift and just put them into Rogers. That would leave the nights, the night staff cleaning approximately over 30,000 square feet per person. You need to remember the day custodian is not assigned in the area. They maintain and support the building during the day. They can't do general cleaning when the building is fully populated. So that's what the standards are based on. The other thing is, you know, you, my, my facilities report has another, um, update of the work order system again, and you can see they're starting to pile up. We don't have the capability of doing those things and banging them out with the staff we presently have. So while it's. with the staff we presently have. So while it's, it's tough, because it's budget, it's one of those things that, you know, I will tell you that i- if staff is not added, we're going to have a problem in the buildings.
Thank you. Any questions, George? As I say, we discussed this ad nauseam the other night. Well, thank you.
That's not an action item, right?
It's not, no.
Show me the money.
I'm over, they moved an action item next week. Second?
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Post it.
Just to make it an action.
I would think if you're going to do that, too, would you add redesigning the custodians that we presently have?
What do you mean redesign? Reassign?
Reassigning, we have two or third shift at Rogers presently, when we...
I think you addressed that.
Well, we have addressed it publicly.
I, yeah, I, I went through this before. There are some other things that I would recommend that need to be changed, they're just not urgent that they're changed right now. I would propose a better solution to that is, while people adjust and move, we change the shifts at that time, which we just did with a Thompson thing to correct it, to start upheaving the whole staff and everything, and changing everything right now is not crucial. Getting the appropriate people to maintain the building is, right now. That's, that's the priority, as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, we're going to move on to the superintendent's reports.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. All right. So each month, I'm going to make certain you receive the different reports we have in the backup tonight. So if, as you can see, we have the enrollment report, and I just lost it. There we go. There we go. So we have the enrollment reports, which you will receive and continue to receive on a regular basis. We will have the building facilities reports from the school dude, as you see here, as Mr. Collins just referred to, as to how many requests there are, how many work is in progress, how many are completed, how many are duplicate requests, et cetera. So you'll have that analysis on a regular basis. You'll also see, from month to month, the demographics, and for those of you in TV world, right now, our demographics are showing, we're at 56.1% for free lunch, 4%, so free and reduced is over 60% right now for the district. Our IEPs, 16% of our population have IEPs, and our ethnicity is at Native American, 3%, 3% for Asian Pacific, 25% Black, 24% Hispanic, and 45% White. And then we also, the committee, and we also have reports for each building. And then, we have the enrollment and the staffing levels. This was something that got brought up earlier today, and this was as of October 3rd, 2004, our enrollments and staffing levels. Presently, we have 194 students in kindergarten, 169 in grade one, 189 in grade two, 150 in grade three, and 145 in grade four. As it was discussed earlier, class size does, does determine staffing, and presently, in kindergarten, our contract has 23 students, and at the other levels, one through four, 24 students is the most students we have in a class. The teachers needed, we, it's simply a math situation, we take the total number of students, we divide it by the contractual class size, and that helps us to realize how many teachers we need. So if you do the math, at kindergarten, it comes to 8.43. Grade one, it's a little over, just seven, 7.04. Grade two, it's 7.88. Grade three, 6.25, and grade four, 6.04, just a little over. So presently, we have nine kindergarten teachers, eight grade one, nine grade two, and that right now, we could get by with eight, as I mentioned, that is the grade level presently, we could have get by with eight teachers, but we would be capped to the max, we would have no room for additional students in any of those classes. And then, grade three and grade four, we presently have seven teachers there. So I will do this on a monthly basis, so we can watch as the year goes on, what happens with the enrollment, especially at the Pell School. Then, also on a monthly basis, we'll continue, last year, we started our homeless children, youths grant program report. One of our partners, Sharon Carter, from Newport Partners for Families, as a partner with us, she oversees that data, this data for us, and helps us to report it to the state. From June of 2014 to September of 2014, we still have 19 families that are considered homeless, which is a total of 35 students. 25 of them are at Pell, three of them are at Thompson, and five are at Rogers, two are out of district, and 11 are of non-school age. It is not unusual, the way our trending is right now in our district, that usually when families are in this situation, there are, it seems to be, most of those children that live in those families are of elementary school age. But we'll continue to work on that and monitor that. Also, what's been provided to you is the Newport School Department, I'll call it Progress Update. And we used this monitoring tool to make sure we stay on top of your goals for the school year, and where we are as a school district, as far as that work's concerned. So it's a very simple chart, where it's red, yellow, green, orange means it's delayed, and you'll see on this chart that most of our work is in progress. We're actually doing AP courses, we have our teachers that are now participating in the Mass Insight College Initiative that we've started at the high school. The training that's going behind, the training being provided for these teachers is to help us implement more AP courses, and Mass Insight, which is a Boston school reform agency, would like to come down in either November and December and speak to you more about this initiative we have at the high school. Our goal and purpose here is to increase graduation rate, to increase eligibility for college, and in other words, to provide better services for our high school students with better trained teachers, or teachers that are more aware of more, the rigorous instruction in AP courses. They'd also like to share some data with you on what the data reflects as far as more students taking AP courses, and the, the correlation in graduating from high school and then going on successfully to an after-school, either two or four-year educational program, college, or junior college. They also would like to share as far as the, the significance, or maybe the less significance, on the score of three. And actually, they are doing research and have worked with other schools in Massachusetts, showing that in a lot of cases, people are focused, naturally so, on reaching a score of three or above. That means you've passed the course successfully to go on and maybe not have to take it in your college years. But they're finding that a lot of the students that aren't as successful with the three are, are being just as successful when they go on to college as well. So that's something for the future. And as Mrs. Bolin shared earlier, we are going to have the food service, we'll have the Chartwells update for you, and you'll notice that we have improved and we've done better than a year ago, last year. And I want to share with the committee, the director, finance, and I were talking today, that remind the committee that if we do have any losses, Chartwell absorbs the first $30,000. But our goal is to expand that, as already mentioned this evening, expanding our food service program and services to other agencies to help bring in revenue, which we've already started. I also want to share with you and thank Director, Finance Director Joan Tracy, Ms. Becky Bolin, and also like to thank Cindy King. Over the weekend, we were able to file for a $30,000 grant through the CHAMP's program to help reinforce our meals program, summer meals program, and to help get some administrative help as far as promoting the program, marketing it, and getting more families services through our summer program and dinner program. So that was filed, and I want to thank Providence and Peter Assen from the City of Providence. They reached out to Newport, and they asked if we'd partner with them on this initiative, so that was very nice of them. Also, I'd like to thank Mayor Winthrop and CEO, Child Family Services Senate, yep, for writing letters of support for our grant. And I will remind the committee, the grant writer we have is someone that's being paid per diem. We did not hire someone, the person is getting $30 an hour, and not to exceed $3,000 for the, for the work. So I want to thank everyone for that, that took a team effort. Financial group, I'm going to be actually meeting with the financial, the city financial review group on Thursday of this week. I want to thank Ken and Louisa and Ron for offering to come in and have a conversation about finances and maybe some ideas, work. I'm not quite clear, but I do know it was a very supportive email, asking if they could come in, we'll have a conversation about finances. And it was also one of the recommendations that was made to the city council, as far as review work with this finance subcommittee. Keep your fingers crossed, the fans at Pell, Thursday, the crane, even if it's raining, will be at, on the property to fix that unit over at Pell, Pell School. So we're looking forward to that, and I want to thank Mr. Collins for the annoying, being kind to my emails and calls about what's going on, on the updates. Let's see, I think that's about it for now, where there's a lot going on, and I want to thank the staff as usual for all their support and help during these busy days. So thank you.
Yes.
Okay, I just had a request. I mean, it's all under superintendent update. I use board docs exclusively, and I'm very, and I do a lot of research on it. So sometimes it's difficult to find things. Could these be listed out, though, under enrollment, Chartwells, and not listed under superintendent's update, so that we can, you can then look them up? If not, we're going to have a very difficult time.
I think that's a great idea. Ms. Gazers make, making face.
She's giving me the dirty look, but...
I know, it, we, we have a basic program. So I agree, if we want to use technology well, and we want to use the system well, we should have a discussion and look into the different costs to make life easier. So when you go online, it's much easier for you to pick up the reports, and everything is broken out for you. So we will get those costs, and we'll come back and share with you, but we'll, we will try to do that.
I, I found the trick.
You found the trick?
I'll show you.
Oh, good, because I just looked up the minutes from, that Mr. Leary wanted us to look up, and I have to open up 250, well, some of them I won't have to open, because they have a date, but the rest of them, I have to open every single one of them to find out which set of minutes I want.
When do you find it? Don't worry, she's good.
Yeah, Wendy.
Well, did you call them yet? Because they were going to take you through that training.
Yeah.
They said the other day that they'd be willing to come down.
Okay, and train us?
They haven't given us a workshop in five years.
Yeah.
I hate that word, workshop.
You hate everything, but...
You're a lot out.
It's not a workshop.
Well, maybe we can fit it in with one of the workshops you're going to be doing.
Yes.
Workshop?
He does, he does want a workshop.
So I have some questions on the budget.
I have, but I have...
All right.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I think you had said earlier that the, the budgets, the monthly reports will be going to the council, correct?
No, they are going.
Okay, so they, are they sent electronically?
Yes.
Okay, well, that'll make it simpler. I think the, the enrollment report and the, even building facilities, if we're getting all of that, maybe that will give a broader picture to council, so they'll know, they can really see where a lot of the, a lot of our particular issues are. It would just enlighten them a bit more. I remember a few years back, because when the liaison committee was more active, but sometimes the council member would...
We just took the summer off, we'll be starting after the 11th.
Okay, well, but again, sometimes a council member would come to the meetings, and it's just, I think it might be easier, just so they can be a little more aware. Sure, you can watch the meeting, but if they have that in their hands, it just might encourage even further collaboration. Thank you.
Okay.
So, Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
I have some questions on the budget, which is all part of 8.1.
Did you get that all?
Not 8.1.
8.1?
That was last year's budget. I thought it was this year's budget now. We're talking about last year's budget before. So Joan, since you stayed this very end, the next time is going to be earlier for you. The agenda's been, agenda's been modified.
My dog hopes so.
So, I have some, I have some serious concerns with this year's budget. So, I just heard we've been sending this to the council? We've been sending this to the council already?
Yes, they've been requesting it.
We sent it July, the August statement to the council.
We started with July.
I said, where's that $340,000 that we reduced the line by? Which items did you reduce? We reduced line on 51110 by 340,000, we added it back in, so we had to reduce some other lineups by 340,000.
And I have not caught up to that yet.
You haven't done it yet? Okay, so what we're giving the council?
Had to wrap up the year end, get the school year started.
Okay, so now, my other one, one of, I won't go any further, there's one line on, line on 52201, we reduced that from last year by $1.3 million. 5.223, we reduced this by 1, 5.2201, sorry, by $1.3 million. What is your expectation of that?
I have to meet with the retirement group.
We, we said that, you asked that question earlier. And she, she, she said it was retirement...
No, but I mean...
So tying last year's money to it.
Not last year, tonight you asked that.
All right, so tonight, I don't know if there's money.
Yeah, you said, retire rededitions.
So, all right, that's fine, I just, I'm very, let me say it again. I think the country made it very aggressive, we got, we got, by this month, everybody knows the law says by end of the month, section, we have to report a quarterly update to the state and the city, by the end of this month, 30 days after the quarter's over. No?
No.
What's this?
October 25th.
Huh?
Has to be signed and sealed and delivered to the state by October 25th.
Right, the school may show within 30 days, it closes the first, or third, and second quarters, adopt a budget that may be necessary to enable operate in current debt or describe the section. So yeah, so we have to anybody in this month. No, I'm, I'm fine, I'm just saying that, I just think the lines we cut are going to be a problem, you know?
Any other discussion, otherwise entertain a motion for a chairman?
So who?
Second.
Just one thing, did you want to mention?
Oh, I'm sorry. Yes, I'm sorry. I do have an announcement there. The Pell librarian is looking for volunteers to help stack the library shelves. I'm making a public announcement here. But you do have to go online at Pell to sign up to volunteer at the school, but they are, they do have, which is a great thing, we have an enormous amount of students taking out books, but we do need help in the stacking. So anyone wants to do some community service or help out at the library, please go on the Pell website. Thank you.